One, 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 take a minute to relax and I'll entertain emotion. Yoli, just in time! Can you change the corrections? Alright, then all is in favor of I. All is opposed may. We have the best possible location. Kenny's gonna be tied up for awhile. And, uh... You got what?
We got one point.
Oh, do you? If you wouldn't mind waiting a few minutes.
I'm fine. You guys do whatever you gotta do. I'm good.
So, why is the stone water... ...in our... ...philosophy?
Our previous meeting, well, we came along. Paul has done a wonderful job. With a redraft and folding in of the FB work. Forrest Bell. He looks like he's ready to work. Along in the short run is we need, we need a little assistance from FB on one very, very focused bit of village that is, that nobody has that. The documentary, one of them, in my packet. Forrest Bell work. It was, it looked like this. Post on line.
Right. It's just clearing up something that they've already done, right?
Yeah, okay. We, we need to basically ask them to put a paragraph or two into language terms. It's, we really fetched up on it the other night and it involves some terminology that is, was new to the Forrest Bell work. So, it, it's pretty dense going and we couldn't refine it because we didn't understand some of the terminology. So, we'd really like to be able to toss a very small section of it back to Forrest and ask, can you, can you, you know, reword this so as to make it more clear for the language?
And it's, and it's not a section that JT used?
Nope. Well...
It's redevelopment, right?
Yeah. I... Let's see, I don't know if you looked at that, actually.
Is it something that you guys are gonna wanna have in the final product?
Yeah, I don't know how seriously we were thinking about it, but it would be great to... But I think just a clarification would do. I mean, I'm not sure they have to break the kingdom to rewrite it.
No, not with that.
It'll get pretty tough.
No, if they've already done it for us, then all we did is just...
Just to make sure that we're clear on what is...
What page, what pages it on?
Eleven. I think this is the spot.
Yeah. Eleven and that's in the February 2, 2012.
That's a lot of sixes.
It would probably be very close.
Which part?
It's 3.1, 3.1.2 redevelopment.
Alright. The whole thing or just a portion of it?
Um, really just, uh... Can you see it?
Oh, yeah, you do.
Let's see. Actually, section three was the major place where we were fetching up.
Well, it was just the paragraphs, yeah. Yeah, the first part's not...
Which version was this one?
The last version we had. It was the one that was gonna be the final.
Probably all the same word.
Do you know what they mean when they're talking about redevelopment?
Yeah, we know what they mean by redevelopment, but some of the language that they use, we just couldn't quite agree on it. We weren't able to clarify it, clarify it ourselves or Paul.
The technology was, what a, effective area was when we had a fish up on.
Well, go ahead and contact him, but see if they can, you know...
I don't think we wanna hire them to rewrite though. I mean, there are some...
Not unless they...
They'd love to doing that. We need to hold up.
They're, they're not gonna do this for free, so...
Well, then let's not get too involved, though. We wanna, you just wanna explain so that you can understand it, correct?
We need a, we need a letter asking for more clarity on 3.1.2.3.
Alright, in the letter you're gonna explain to them why it is you're looking for, what you're, what you're having issues with?
Yeah.
So that it'll be easy for them to say, "Okay, we can do that, da, 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 bingo."
And you wanna ask them for an estimate on, on post, it might cost them to...
Well, what if they estimate $500? What are you gonna say? No, don't do it? And then where are we?
Who's hiring, who's writing the ordinance? I mean, you really want them to take on rewriting our ordinance without looking at the...
No, it turns out what they're asking, it would be like, uh...
We discussed question...
Well, yeah, yeah, but wait, wait, wait. I thought you just wanted them to just write this so that we could all understand.
Right.
We're not looking for them to do anything else, are you? Cannot do anything other than what's front page of the letter.
You want me to ask them, can you, for, for $100 or less to, uh, to give us a redraft of this section, 3.1.2.3, A, B, C, such that it is more clear to read? Or, I don't want to play any more games.
Wouldn't they have to read with us to do that?
Hopefully not. If you guys can explain to them what it is that you're having problems with in the letter to them.
So, may we proceed with that or maybe you can...
Well, yeah, but I'd like to see the letter before.
Oh, absolutely.
We'll, we'll have a draft on Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay.
We're meeting Tuesday.
Okay.
So, do you want us to include a price on to exceed any of your asks?
You can try it, see what happens. I would think since they wrote it for us.
They might do.
And we, you know, we went through the process with...
Yeah.
The Jennifer girl, right? That was her name?
Yeah.
You know, narrowing it down and answering our questions. This may be something that may fall right into that issue. It's, I'm hoping it's no big deal.
Well, if they're, if it's something that they're using in other ordinancees, I imagine they'll have, they'll be able to do it with me, but I just, just wanted to remind everyone that their consultants, they get paid for doing this and we had a grant before.
I understand. And that's why I'm asking you guys, is this something you're gonna want in our new ordinance? Or are, you know...
Yes, we're...
JT didn't include his thing, right? And why not?
He...
He was moving on.
He was in a hurry. Yeah. And they not apply to the town... It's true that the section on redevelopment refers to large commercial projects, like they're going at the mill in Sanford, that time. That's what a redevelopment project is.
Well, that's a...
The likelihood of us having something like that in the near future is...
Ever.
No.
First, we have to have a big development to have a redevelopment of it.
If someone wanted to redo something amazing on one of the marinas, that would be the only place I could think of.
What marinas in America?
I don't know.
There are no... It could be any...
Marinas around, I never know what town they're in.
It could be any, any...
The trading center, you know, the marina.
Yeah, I guess. No, but I was thinking of one, a little more town.
It would be second one.
It's true, though, it is cool.
But anyway, yes.
We have to assume because they included it's a tool that would be...
I act and tree to have that.
Well, if they had stripped of all the tar and put new tar down, it would...
Go ahead.
It would.
Go ahead.
For the trading.
Get a clarification for it.
Or, um, yeah, if they had someplace, if they ever...
If they talked to you on the phone after something, well, that should've called you anyway.
Then we just wanna make sure that we're clear on...
It was Jennifer something, wasn't it? Jen something.
The thing is, Jen Jesperson.
No, that's it! And we've got emails from her anyway, somewhere. Alright, so go ahead and see what happens.
Does anyone know if she's still with us?
We'll find out.
Well, I can help.
You can write care of her and then see what happens.
Yeah.
They'll leave this thing, they'll leave a order to her and they'll say, "She's no longer here. Can somebody else help you?" But if you do have to talk to them on the phone, have one of these two talk to her instead of you. Gavin would be the best. Gavin is short and sweet. Alright, so we're all, so that's it for you guys. Another meeting Tuesday and...
Another meeting Tuesday and another meeting Tuesday after that. So, we're trying, we're trying to get this thing on track. And it's coming on, but we're, we're, uh, we're working well with Paul, I think, and with one another.
Good. Alright. What else did you got? Just, uh... Well, won't be concerned with the old, best possible location. And where exactly is it?
It's right there. If you look at the application, I think you'll tell.
That's the other copy?
That I know of, yeah.
Uh, one, it's, uh, 1-0, Saturday, 8-17. 1-7.
1-7, yeah.
Is that the Red Gate?
Right east, that one? Right here where...
After the new gravel pit? After the new gravel pit?
A gravel pit would be just past, so you take Red Gate, before the gravel pit, I believe. Uh, well...
Coming from downtown.
Uh, yes, it would be just after. Actually, it'd be Lakeside Drive and that turns on to Red Gate, just kinda bears off.
Oh, okay. Well, do you wanna, as long as Ken's not here, do you wanna explain to us what it is that you wanna do? You're the owner, correct?
I'm trying to become the owner. It's been quite a battle, anyway. Um, what I'm basically trying to do is buy the...
And you are, what's...
I'm Paul Duskowski, sorry.
No, no, that's right. We're almost too informal sometimes.
Okay. I'm basically trying to purchase the property and renovate it.
Ken has a question.
So, the end result is the camp's in the best possible location as it is now. He will talk for a couple of hours on how, how well he's gonna do. He loves landscaping, rain downs and erosion control, but the house isn't of the best five.
Alright, do we have a moment?
Kenny, I do feel a little taken away, so I won't doubt the insult.
So, you're saying, no changes necessary?
Yeah, he's got a good erosion control plan, he's got some good replantings he wants to do. The septic, it's, it's, how far is it from the road now?
The septic?
No, the building.
Building is 27 feet from the center.
So, there's no more room to move it back and it's, it's too close to the lake, but listen to him for awhile, he's got some good...
You wanna pass that stuff on? Okay, you are, and what's the plan?
Uh, the plan is basically I wanna renovate it and basically I wanna take the main, the structure, whatever it is, you know, it's 22 by 24, and just remodel it and put it in, update everything, I guess.
Are you looking...
New foundation, you know...
You're gonna jack it up?
Yes.
New foundation?
Yes.
Has it been, has it had its 30% expansion yet?
I looked at the file, it does have nothing up to 1957, it seems like. So...
What kind of pitch do you have toward the water? The roof pitch? No, I mean just the land.
It drops right off. Um, there is photos, there's something, you know, Ken's got the photos, I've got more photos, they have, they need more. But it does drop off pretty... Yeah, I'm pretty much gonna move this whole property, so... Basically, you can look through these, which you can see, it shows you the elevation. I have a picture of the stairs. They're down. And you see, did you give anybody the plan? I gave a bunch of copies of the flanders and...
Bunch of copies?
I mean five, but I don't know how many you got.
It's 27 feet from the center line?
Basically... Yes, to those trees, is there a picture of the trees anywhere? Here's, here's the front of the camp.
Yeah, we've got the trees.
The trees are about 10 to 14 feet off the house.
Really, it takes up to the...
Oh, okay, so a giant...
It's on that peninsula, it's on that...
Alright, alright.
It goes out to the pond.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's the high side, right?
Is it for sale for awhile?
From what I can find now, 2010.
Okay.
And I understand why now nobody wants to grab it.
I've gone back there before, so now I, I have an idea where...
Luckily, I do this for a living, so...
What for a living?
Well, I'm, I'm starting now, so let's get company.
So, you're...
I'm from California. I, I used to go up there as a kid. My great grandmother had a camp up there.
Wow, we're not gonna hold that again.
Now I'm back again.
And you're 44 feet from the water?
Yes.
Well, that's not...
Straight line, that doesn't mean on your body you're going down the hill. That's basically what I did, is I gave you a sketch of everything that's there now, currently. And then if you flip it, you'll see what kind of, what it looked up. It's with erosion in all of this. I deal with this all the time, basically what I, what I specialize in, you know, my business, so I do a lot of drainage, a lot of, you know, slowing the water down, you know, vegetation, ripper out to different sized ripper out, you know...
This concrete wall is gonna stay?
Uh, which one?
The one in front of the camp, between the camp and the, this one here?
That is just a pad, and I'll tell you what that pad's doing. It's really not doing a good job. It's, it's basically holding, supporting the footing is what that is.
Oh, I said wall, not wall.
Yeah, and it's about, I wanna say foot, foot and a half thick, and then he's got rear works under that, that is a tannin wall, which right now just, uh, deteriorating.
So, the pad is rotating?
Well, it's, it's pushing out, that's what it's doing. It's pushing down the bank. I mean, it makes sense because really, I haven't, I don't have any idea how deep that footing is, and I'm just looking at it, it's not very deep.
And you, your name again is?
I'm Paul Duskowski. I have pictures for all of you to see, but he has the tannin wall he's got now, and it's not doing anything, probably. It's just deteriorating all the time.
Uh, so you're gonna expand the camp somewhat?
I'm wanting to get my expansion, but it's, I'm so limited there as it is, so that's basically what I gotta figure out how... I wanna keep the basic footprint, 22 by 24.
Alright.
Yeah, whatever I can gain on the, on, I guess if you look at it from up from the lake on the right side, and I'm still limited over there, because that's where the septic's going, new septic. So, I mean, 10 feet off the line, 10 feet off the house, plus the septic, 24 feet long, so...
What kind of...
It's basic, right?
What kind of foundation? It's gonna be like a lower floor foundation. It's gonna be a walkout base from that.
On the backside.
On the backside, it's gonna walk out?
On the lake, on the lake side.
On the lake side.
It would be bigger.
You know, steps down as you come down.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you guys can look from all...
This, the, the application does...
It does?
Now, some of these trees have to be removed?
That's what, um... And I'll tell you why, and I hate to take these, but I have to, but when I dig this out, basically I'm gonna just, I'm gonna dig up the roots, because I'm gonna have to dig up the front to get some foundation under, you know, I'm gonna dig a couple feet back so you can get in there and move and set the footing and do the forms and all that. Um, I did have, uh, what I'm, you know, I wanna re, I love to have landscaping, so I wanna put trees back, but I'm thinking, uh, there's a picture in here of the tree I'd like to put back. It's, it's like an Armstrong maple, it's called, instead of growing width, it grows up, you know, so, you know, it's not infringing into the road and the back of the camp, but yeah, you still have something up there. And then I wanna do blueberries and ferns and native stuff. I love native, that's what I do, I do a lot of the stone, do a lot of stone work, stuff too, so...
Paul, is this gonna be your residence?
Uh, it's not going to be my residence, but I do wanna use it here around the camp. 250 inches from the house, so...
You're gonna be parking on the septic field?
Uh, yes. That may be off the street.
So, septic is pumped up, they have a little bit?
Well, you'll see, you'll see where it, that's what's existing, and then I'll show you how it's, uh... He doesn't have, there should be three or four different sections, yeah, you got them all right here, they've given everybody the copy.
Alright, so what was the...
And you can ask, you see that one? I'm looking at it. And this thing, I mean, it should be setbacks, right?
Where's the existing septic? Right now, you know?
I believe it's right, I'll show you that.
Oh, you're not sure?
Is that everything here?
Yeah, I think so.
This one has the existing septic on it.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Do you have the original thing here? Yes, right there.
Oh, that?
Follow the pipe down, the tunnel down in this back corner, and I follow it down to here, and it's a flat spot right there, and it actually shows some pictures, I'm gonna find those pictures and show us. I've got a picture that you got, blocking on.
That's gravity field, yours is gonna, you pick gravity out of the house porch, you'll have to pump it.
Well, Kenny Gardner designed it, so Kenny designed it so it's 30 inches down roughly from the existing soil, so it's gonna go right in. And depending on what we do with the house, either we raise it or lower it, if I raise it, I could probably get gravity.
Why would you lower the house?
Well, why would I lower it? I would lower it to get rid of some of that, uh, emmagna, I guess.
Oh, would you say you need to cut out some of the earth?
Yes, because if you, if you look at, you'll see in this photo right here.
I mean, you'll have people...
I walk up and on your road... Inside there now is about, you know, the bottom of the floor, just about six feet, so I'm hunched down with my hand, but, so you know, there's room to go down if I could. Plus it, I go down, I need more support than I need, you know, and then start into the bank, to support it. See, right here, you can see, that one, and then the front side, that's the backside of this, so the concrete is right here on the top.
Yeah.
See, if I dig down, now I'm gonna be down at the original, you know, grade, basically, so it looks like he built that up, whoever here built it up. Um, it's quite a slope.
Are you gonna maybe fill out the second floor, square the signs up, or leave it...
I wanted to go on the top. Because again, I'm hunched down, it doesn't talk in the attic here, and it's...
Yeah, right. What kind of an attic is it? How tall is it?
It's all, it's completely open and it's prob, it's probably nine feet from the floor to the top, but then they have the colt ties on it, you should have the colt ties that separate, but, um, you know, they cut them down low, so...
Right now, it's not very usable in an attic, is that what you're saying?
Uh, my kids call it the three little bedroom, because there's three little beds up there.
Oh, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What is the distance from the edge of the road to the street elevation of the, of the camp? Approximately?
14 feet? I'm gonna guess, if you can look, you see that?
It's 27 from the center line to 40.
Yeah, that would be from the edge, so the edge of the road.
Yeah, the edge.
Oh, so you, you wanna cross the street as well?
All the way across, the road, it basically splits the lot in half. Kind of on one side of them.
Would be useful.
I guess. Drinking up my sketches.
Here's the file.
Are you enjoying this now?
Yeah.
It's not like if you had a...
Probably.
Did you have anything else over here?
I was off, Paul. Ask him, ask him how much, how much land he has.
Across the street?
Straight down to the lake. It would be basically 0.16, I guess, because it's, uh, 0.17, it's 0.36 of an acre, so exactly 15,000 something square feet of lot.
What's the landline on the other side of the...
Drop right off, just like the, um...
Oh, it does? So, the high point is the road then?
Yes.
I guess.
Must be east of...
Place all over.
What kind of traffic?
Traffic? Kind of the middle, so it's not a lot, it's probably...
Well, I don't know which way the, which...
Five, 18, 18, 16, I'm not sure, 17.
So, so what's, why not go the other way with the septic?
This way, over here, and...
Because it's basically, other side's even steeper. I have a flat spot right here.
That's what I was...
Which, uh, I have a photo, so... It's a little narrow, yeah.
I'm drawing something.
Trying to find the septic levels here.
Paul, would you be looking west out your, out your, uh...
Something would be behind me, so I'm probably looking...
North.
I'm looking kinda north and west.
Towards the lake?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I thought.
Yes.
I wasn't sure. Is this some antique, is this something? Yeah, is this some antique shovel handle here?
No, I don't know what's wrong. This post, I have no idea, actually, you know what? I, I ran up there, it was like half dark, like, oh...
That's true.
I'm missing a photo up here or something.
This would intrigue me. What is this? Here's your question, the septic. First of all, show us which side?
You'll see the, you know... That side. It's the side...
It's the only really flat spot on the block. With free retaining walls, probably.
Ooh! I like this one.
Alright, let's pass some of these around, share the wealth.
We'll get it organized here.
Really?
What do you think you got going on? Do you have all copies?
Yep. I should.
So, this is what the septic comes in there?
Oh, yeah.
So, yes, I didn't realize it existed.
Ooh, look at this one. Oh, this is a entirely different looking house now.
Well, basically, that's the 22 by 24. It's just, that's all.
Ah, so this is the subdivision?
Yes. And that's, you haven't really determined that yet.
This is what...
It's kinda looking back, you know, the way...
Uh, it wouldn't be a subdivision, but it could be interpreted to two lots. But I would say, from, how far is it from the road to the water across the street?
On the opposite side?
Yeah.
Both the same, isn't it?
It's about...
It's actually, yeah.
Yeah.
The lot's 162, so it took 80, yes, he took 81 and then he probably filled it with 20 something. It's just, it's like an estuary on the back side, the other side.
Measured down, but if you went out and...
Yes.
So, we could put it on the, on the other side of the road?
The, the building, it's not, no, because the water's...
And it still be just this?
Yeah. We've done three before this already and brought them up to about the same problem.
Good luck.
That's existing, so it's...
How much higher is it gonna be than it already is?
How much higher is it gonna be than the road?
And now than the, the building, is it gonna be higher than it already is for this one?
Um, I think I can make it where I have to get in, I don't own it yet, so I'm trying, you know, once I get in, I will know exactly what I can do with the height of it, because I gotta work, you know, stretch it out and then see what's, you know, what I have to work with, basically, I, I, so I can't answer that.
Yeah, that's...
Probably, it's gonna be a little nasty.
Is there a septic design kicking around in that package?
Yes.
Who's got it?
Well, you got all five, you got all five?
It's not a mess, but...
So, that, what we're referring to as a road is really a regular...
What?
Well, what we've been talking about is 27 feet to the center line of the road, the septic, the road is regular.
Well, yeah, for some people, access to the camp. Well, yeah, but some of people access the case.
Maybe Eric tells me what it's about for.
We've got it over here, finding this thesis.
I mean, it, it is right on the road there, I mean, you can tell from the, the roads, the heights, point that whole area, and the homes are off the side of the road, and they're all down a little bit. I tried to do the, I said, describe it, so I'm on here and speak to them. So, you don't really know, potentially own the place, you don't really know exactly how this is gonna end up, as far as how far you may have to dig down.
Yes.
What the 30% expansion is gonna really entail. Now, if, if we grant a best possible location, now we need something that's relatively definite, as far as what the final's gonna really-
Your jurisdiction authority is where is the best possible location for a house? And to me-
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right.
He can't get any closer to the lake, he can't get any closer to the road, he's eight feet from the side property line, so you could say we wanna see 10, and make him get off that side property line, push him over towards that septic, and that's the only place he can expand if he wants to, if he wanted to rip it down, rebuild, he's stuck in that same footprint. Uh, the only thing he could do is slide it a little bit over towards that septic area. So whether he did a foundation underneath, or ripped it down with a brand new, or did additions onto it, he'd be limited all that with the showing zone.
There isn't much room under that septic.
Exactly, yeah, that's, normally I'd say you gotta go for the 10 feet on the side setback, but he doesn't have, that, that two feet could be usable, critical space for-
Well, what's existing now for septic, is a steel retaining tank, is it?
And I think it's on the name of this property, as it's, it's shown.
Yes, yes, yeah, it's all run that direction, I don't know, you know.
I mean, that line has been, uh, surveyed by some consultants, I did call them too, and contact them, 'cause they did the name of that door, and I think they did somewhere further out that too as well.
I mean, to me, the septic is a key. What's the variance he needs for the septic?
It was separation on the well, I think was one, and, uh, which required more casing.
And this is, they propose 86 feet of casing.
They may go 86 feet and not even hit ledge, they may have to do a hundred-
I'm thinking they might have to do more there.
Exactly, anyway.
What kind of well is it now, just a point in the water or something?
It's point driven. Yes, no, it's just a pure gravel hardback out there, so I think, yeah, you're right, you're gonna go further down, you don't hit ledge. There's no question.
And where was the proposed well gonna be?
Put it on there?
Oh, wait.
One of the sheets has it here.
Oh, back there by the road. Gotcha, gotcha.
What I'm gonna do is put a, uh, a riser on it, bury it down there, cut it off, put a riser on it, you know, so we can access it. It could've gone across the street, but then you're just digging it up, and digging up the road, and blocking somebody out, and if I ever had gates, whether they went or obviously that's what the frost is gonna go, so.
Paul, you're gonna try and do this, this winter?
Yes, I'm just gonna try to do some of it, I won't be able to get it all done, but. I'd like to do the combination and stuff before, that's what I'm, you know. The rest of it I can do with my, with my lot.
Would you be opposed, um, uh, sometimes when we do these, is, we like to learn more about this LID, or, or you, you seem to be, uh-
Knowledgeful.
Knowledgeful, yeah, very interested in this stuff. Would you, would you mind if we made an arrangement to, uh, have a site visit with you when you're all done?
That's fine, absolutely.
Just as a, as a learning experience?
A lot of times if you, if you do different elevations, you can slow it down, you know what I mean, with vegetation, with stone work, and stones, you know, I mean, like the, uh, drip engines, a lot of people don't do them, I don't know why, but you wanted to throw the water out of there, I mean, get it off the building, you know? But it all depends on, you know, obviously the, uh, pitches, you know?
We're, we're finding, we're working on a stone water road and snap, and we're finding that more and more these best possible location permits are dealing with tougher and tougher lot situations.
Sure.
That's the nature of it, because the, uh, number of existing lots that are available to division.
Who's got a picture of the house right now?
I mean, the way that soil is, I mean, it's not, it's heavy rains, it's the fly on stones that you get, that's where the problems are.
So pitches towards the water?
And that sandy ground, it's not, you know, it depends on how deep you go, but it's not coarse enough, you gotta find it, there's too much sand in it, you know? So on a hill like that, it's just point of rock, and I watch, you know, you can take, you know, that, you can slow it down.
I guess, I've got a question that I have in my head, and it may be an obvious answer, that I just don't know it. Let's assume for a minute, because it's a little bit unsure as to whether or not this closing makes place, as far as passing papers, let's assume we also did this, you know, best possible location, the okay. Does it go by the wayside if he in the end does not purchase the house, or does it still go with whoever has the house?
Yeah, okay. That was, that's what I was trying to lead up to before. This was a much better presentation.
We put it in the ordinance, it would need to be implemented within, I think, 18 months.
And it's not that-
They come back and go over it.
It's not a void, they get a new one.
Yeah, and the one we did last time was Hudson, uh, they came in 13, 14 years ago, never did it, they just came back in again to do it again. We never had the ordinance there that said after so many months, you gotta come back and go over it again, but.
Does it have?
Yeah, yeah, we gave a, a window of opportunity, so it, it wasn't openly ended out there, so we were guaranteed. No, we think so, it would be the same condition.
It's, it's for the property, 'cause we're looking at the best possible case for the property, or for what's gonna be done on the property, and different owners wouldn't necessarily make it, you know. A different, well, it might be a different proposal, but still, it's not gonna be a better location necessarily. Because all of these are coming to us because, you know, they're, they're, what's the word? You know? Anyway, they're, they're legal, more or less.
Not at fault.
Ah, that's it! And there's not a whole lot of room usually to deal with, you know, so we can pick them a little bit this way, a little bit that way, a little bit this way, but, you know, not all the way out, probably.
They are applicant specific, I, I mean, if, if Paul sold us tomorrow to somebody, if he owned it, we would have to see what the new applicant wants to do.
Alright, I don't think in this case the new applicant, there is really no room to do anything, it's where it is, and a little bit to the left-hand side, it's more of a dish.
We're giving a best possible location for-
Paul, this comes-
For this setup, basically, the septic's gonna be over here, the well's gonna be here, barring any big problems, and the house is gonna be roughly within each, this framework. And if somebody else bought it, you know, I don't see us changing, you know?
In this specific instance.
Right, because there's, there's not a whole lot of room for them to put the septic somewhere else on the property, and the well somewhere else, unless they put it across the street, so.
Which in this case too, is if the septic and the well are, or whatever else was across the street, there's still no room to move the house away from the lake, away from the road, it's still just left in there.
That's basically what we're looking at.
Yeah.
But part of the, the level of comfort that I feel with Paul is that he does this for a living, he knows what he's doing.
Right, I talked with him about, uh, working with Acton Wingfield ownership with the storm ornament, and some best management practices, and the drip line trenches, those would still be conditions.
Right, yeah.
You know, but they, they get a plan, and there's implementation of that plan.
I, I'm always certain Kenny's gonna be with, with the, uh, conditions of consultation with, uh, AWOL, is that what it is?
Yeah.
AWOL are equal, it's how it works, so.
Uh, second. Any further comments, questions, conditions? Let's see, who's, uh, did you want to? Yeah, you guys have both, sorry. Uh, no further comments then? Ken, you're all set with this?
Yeah.
Alright, then I'll say favor, I, I'll suppose, and hey, it's a done deal, good luck, appreciate it. Okay, we try.
That's a challenge, believe you have it.
Yeah, well, good luck. Uh, you guys can, you guys can have those.
And would you mind, uh, I mean, see us, uh, just in a year or so?
So, chief, you got it in force? Just observing the baby rounds. Have anything? Alright then, goodnight, cable land. See you guys in two weeks.